Good evening. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Slackman Ciccolini, would you please lead?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would first like to welcome my fellow board members. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman.
And good evening to our town manager.
Good evening.
And good evening to our clerk.
Good evening.
Good evening to ladies and gentlemen of the audience and those watching at home. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Our first piece of business this evening is a presentation of a citation. And this is to congratulate the Hammersmith Restaurant on their 50th anniversary here in Saugus. So I would ask if they could please come up to the podium. While they're walking to the podium, I'd like to read the citation into the record. It says, "Town of Saugus Citation: To All Persons Whom These Presents Shall Come, be it known, the nineteenth day of November that the Town of Saugus sends its congratulations to the Hammersmith Family Restaurant on its 50th anniversary in Saugus, and signed by all five of the Saugus Board of Selectmen." So we are thrilled that you're here this evening. I think that each one of the members would like to say a couple of words. Slackman Riley?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Congratulations on your 50th. It's a great restaurant. You're great friends and community people that, you know, everyone in Saugus knows it, and we live near each other. So I just, I just want to congratulate you on having a business and a family for 50 years and do what you do. It's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Slackman Serena?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Deb, Peter, Angie, congratulations, 50 years of feeding our community. And I also want to thank your staff too, that you had over the years. They're really dedicated staff, and I want to congratulate them for helping the community out also. And I hope you go another 50 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Slackman Cogliano?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First, I'd like to apologize to the Aganis family. There was a time I ate there 330 days a year. Now I think I'm down to about 275. But more than the business, you guys have been great friends of mine for years. I love you all, and I wish you another one continue to success.
Thank you. And Slackman Vice Chair Ciccolini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, it's all been said, but you know, you know how we feel about you. There's nothing like coming back into that restaurant and seeing everybody smiling faces. And as Deb, as you've watched my children grow up, and you always comment about how different it gets year after year after year, but the faces still remain, a lot of the same common faces, always consistent, great meal, but also you guys are a staple in our community and a real part of who we are and what we are in Saugus. And as Mike said, I hope you are here for another 50 years because restaurants like yours are few and far between. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to congratulate you for 50 years of serving Saugus and the neighboring communities. When you walk into your restaurant, you feel like family. You immediately greet the customers that walk in. You treat everybody so wonderfully. Your food is delicious, and I am just so happy that you're here today. And I agree with my fellow selectmen, I hope you are here for another 50 years. With that said, would you like to say a few words?
I want to thank everybody for the last, how many years my parents and us have been there? I get wicked emotional, but thank you for everything. We appreciate everybody and each and every one of you. Thank you. Not good at this.
I have to thank the board, town manager, everybody, the customers. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Come on, Peter.
I want to thank everyone as well. We are a family-run restaurant, and Saugus is our family as well. We love to welcome people into our restaurant, and without the Town of Saugus, we wouldn't be where we are today. Thank you.
Well, we have a citation that we would like to give you, and I believe the board and Mr. Vogler would like to take a picture, if that's okay with you. The next item on the agenda is under correspondence. The Saugus Cultural Council application for a street banner. Is there anyone here from the cultural council? We did receive an application for a street banner by Dennis Gould. It's Main Street at Vine Street is the location that they are requesting. And they would like that to be up from Monday, January 27th to February 24th, 2025.
Madam Chair?
Slackman Ciccolini?
I'll make a motion that we grant the request for the application for the street banner located Main Street and Vine for the Saugus Cultural Council to be, to be placed January 27th to February 24th, 2025, and obviously waiving the bond requirement, and it will comply with all the standard conditions.
And then a second by the chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Slackman Ciccolini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you. The next piece of business is the SCTV appointment letter dated November 14th, 2024. We all received a letter from Michelle Fox, who's the executive director. And I don't need to read this into the record, but because Michelle is here with some of the SCTV staff. Would you like to come up to, you are here, would you like to come up to the podium? And, thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. We all know who you are, but if you wouldn't mind, please give in your name and address. That would be great.
I'm Michelle Fox. I'm the executive director at Saugus TV, 27 Arlington Road, Wauwur.
And I'm Anthony Michele, the associate director at Saugus TV, 1 Flynn Street Court, Danvers.
Mark Stevens, a board member of the Saugus Cable.
Thank you. So it looks like you have decided to fill the administrative position?
Correct.
And how many hours a week will that position be?
So all part-time positions are no more than 29 hours per week.
Do board members have any questions that they would like to ask at this time?
Madam Chair?
Slackman Ciccolini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My, my understanding from the past, past though, it's usually about 15 or 20 hours, right? Is based on the budget. It was 15 to 20 hours a week for that position. That's the expected. This is the administrative assistant position that you hired, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's fine. Okay.
Are there any other questions from board members? All right. Well, we don't need to take a formal vote. It was important, though, you needed to let us know. It looks like we have no other questions for you this evening. We do appreciate the correspondence. It is important that you let the board of selectmen know anytime you have a hire or a fire. Regarding the executive director position, Michelle, I see that your name is on here. So are you taking Rachel's place?
Yes, I was hired starting in July as the executive director.
So is this, is this a temporary role, or is this a, is this your permanent role? Did you?
This is the permanent role. And Mar?
Yes, we all, we all voted on the consolidation of the workforce with, within the budget. And Michelle is the director, and Anthony's the exec-
Associate.
Associate director. And then we have two other members on the technical cameraman.
Madam Chair?
Slackman Ciccolini?
So when you came before us, when the, when there was a departure, you were co-executive directors. At that time, we were under the understanding that when there was a movement towards finding a, finalizing the position, that you understood that per the contract with the town and cable, that we would have to be included in that final decision before it's made, per the agreement. Administrative assistant, we are not, but if you read the contract between the town and Xfinity, it's quite clear that any executive level hires need to be approved and ratified by the Board of Selectmen. So when, when you came before us with, during that interim period, you, we were told that you guys were sharing responsibility at that co-director level. I had never been notified that there-
I can clarify that. Yeah, we, like I said, after we met with you guys in that meeting, and you raised your concerns with having a co-position, what we did is we kind of restructured a little bit. We changed some responsibilities laid out, and we made a clear defined executive director role, and we made a clear defined associate director role. And I believe that all of that stuff would, was submitted with the budget, with the breakdown of duties for each position. And then, like I said, the board at that point, seeing how there's been, you know, no problems in anything, and also no one applied or reached out during that period for the executive director position. So, you know, I think it only made sense in that aspect to go with what's working and, you know, what's the best scenario for the station overall.
So a couple of things that, to, to what you're saying, I hear what you're saying, but there's a process that has to be gone, gone through.
Correct. And I thought when we- And I thought when we presented the budget with the laying out of the actual positions and their titles-
That's why, if I can finish what I was saying, that I'll explain where I was going with it. So the, to remove the interim, there was a process that would require approval by the Board of Selectmen that never happened. In order to comply with our contract with Xfinity, that vote would have to take place, even to today, it would have to take place. Now, if you are going to promote someone to that position, you still have a responsibility under the Mass Attorney General's rules, because of being a nonprofit, to post that position.
Correct.
Was that position posted publicly?
Yeah, we didn't receive anything, like I said, regarding-
Where was it posted?
I believe Craigslist.
Because it was the Alliance for-
Oh, yeah, and the Alliance for Community Media as well.
So you, so you posted the-
And Mass Access.
So you did post, you posted the position, didn't receive any?
No.
Any-
Like I said, we got more response for the admin.
And believe me, when I tell you, you're the most qualified, that's fine. But I just want to make sure we have our i's dotted and t's crossed.
No, I agree.
This, we finally have a cable station that's not under scrutiny and not an embarrassment to the town, and we want to make sure that we're doing everything properly in the way that things are designed. I personally am not a big fan of the whole oversight thing anyway. You have a board of directors, and that's the way my clients usually operate. Unfortunately, this is the way Xfinity requires it, not the way the Town of Saugus requires it. So that being said, there's rules and regulations that we have to comply with because we're bound to that contract. And in order to do that, we have to ratify that position and that approval. So what would probably make sense is for you to put together just a summary of the process that you, that you did. I would put together that you advertised the position, how long you advertised it for, what the results of that advertisement were, the interview process that took place, and how you were elevated to the position of permanent, and you took on co-director and what have you. And then-
I would go with associate director rather than co-director, just because co-director kind of implies that we share the same duties.
Yeah.
And associate's kind of, like I said, it's a burden to the executive director.
Right. Yeah, so that's, that's fine. And, you know, as long as we have it documented, then we as a board can have that presented to us.
Absolutely.
Discuss it, ratify it, you could put it in your file, i's dotted, t's crossed, and we could take it from there.
I just want to piggyback on that. I don't want to hop too much on it. But when Selectman Riley and I went to the cable board, we went to your place across the street on Main Street, and we went over the agreement by and between the Town of Saugus and the Saugus Community Television. And we also had another meeting, and Slackman Serena and I went, and we talked about this. And we reviewed the different sections. And Section 9, Under Governance and Access of Corporation, Section I specifically says, "The board shall approve the executive director, operation manager for the station, and shall hi- and shall hire and fire all employees of the corporation with the approval of the Board of Selectmen." So just to Selectman Ciccolini's point, all approvals especially, and Michelle, you and I talked about this just the other day, and you said to me, "Well, it has to be the executive director." So when I saw how you signed it, I, I did not know. And not that you're not doing a great job. I'm sure you're doing a terrific job. And, you know, I know that you're out and about everywhere. It's the process. It's, it's the agreement that we have with, with you. That's all.
And we'll definitely get your, our board of directors, because they're the ones who hired us as the ED and associate director. So we will get them to do what Jeff has asked.
Absolutely. And I believe you, you have our resumes and stuff for anything. So like I, we wouldn't need to resubmit those or anything to you guys. I think you already have that on, on file, so. But yeah, I wouldn't be opposed to a vote, like I said. I'm confident that we're doing the right thing there, and-
No, we appreciate all the work that you do.
And I'd like to-
We appreciate the station coming here and filming all of the meetings, not just Selectmen and School Committee, but all of the other meetings that we have in town, whether they be committees or commissions, or you're out, you're just about everywhere that there is an event. We appreciate that.
Like I said, I've worked with a lot of different accesses, and we definitely do a lot more than all of them. So, you know, we take pride in that for sure.
Madam Chairman?
Slackman Riley?
Through you, please. Do you have a finance manager yet, a treasurer? Have you hired one? Or who's doing that job?
So-
Do you mean a treasurer on our board?
Yeah.
We have not, we do not have a complete board yet. So they were going to vote on positions within the board?
Yeah, I think we had-
I think hoping at the next meeting.
When we submitted the correspondence, we asked for a placement of a fifth member, from what I was under the impression of. If I'm, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong on that?
Are you referring to the letter, the November 14th letter? Inform us of the hire.
Not during that. It was, I think, during the, the letter for Maureen.
Yeah, do we, do, I don't-
I don't have that.
We don't, yeah, we might not have it here, but I know that, like I said, we're, I'm waiting an appointment of a fifth member. I don't know if they've, I know some people had submitted paperwork to the town hall. I don't know where it's, what position it's at now. I think it was-
Perhaps you can, whatever materials that you do have-
Yeah, for sure.
You can bring to Meredith, and she'll make copies for everybody?
Absolutely.
Because there seems to be a little bit of confusion.
And I wouldn't even mind posting it again. Posting, if we, if we put in-
We did put the CBV backup on the channels.
The board position?
The community bulletin board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we can put the, the, there were opening a spot, there's a spot open on the board, just to see if there's any final applicants that come in, and then we'll do it. One false swoop, we'll just add, you know, we can talk about adding a, another board member.
Yeah, that's the only reason why we haven't made formal appointments yet, without having a full board. I mean, we could make one in the interim, but I think it'd be best to wait until it's fully-
Well, you should still have someone functioning in the interim.
Yeah. And I mean, like I said, we're, we're still doing the books, you know, monthly, so it's not like we're, you know, staving it off until we're waiting, so. But absolutely.
Any other questions from board members?
Just Madam Chairman, just a comment, Michelle and Anthony and the rest of the staff, you're doing a great job over there at the cable station.
Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it. We appreciate the updates and the correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday.
Thank you. You too.
It is now time for our first citizen's comments. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board? Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sharon Floramo, and I'm here tonight to read some information about the requirements of the Stanton Foundation grant. Nowhere on the grant, in terms of dog park location criteria, does it specify the need or requirement to exclude any vacant offline school as described by you. For example, yet for example, you have, I have correspondence that other locations were discussed initially of a couple of parks located near closed schools. However, they were scratched from the list because they weren't qualified. But I have direct information from Stanton that the foundation does not have input as to the location. Back a few months ago, I wrote this from them. It said, "The Stanton Foundation does not get involved in any of the public discussions regarding the dog park location." So shortly after that, I replied to them. "You indicate that Stanton Foundation doesn't have any input to the location. I would like to ask, what about not being part of school property?" And the foundation wrote back, "Yes, as long as the town recommends a site, it does not matter to us. I would assume that if it, if it is school property, it would need the sign-off of the school committee." And they wrote, again, "We don't get into those matters of the location." So when this was initiated during Zoom calls, there was no initiative from anyone to get sign-off from the school committee, and, and you determined Stalker Playground for the location, when it didn't have to be that way. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Yes. Your name and address, please. Thank you.
My name is Marie Floramo. I'm at 12 Stalker Street. And we have a letter from Stephen P. Carlson. He's the chair of the Historical Commission. And he responded to our letter of September 24th, 2024. He states, "The Stalker Playground possesses historic significance in two areas. First, as the site of the Stalker brickyard from the 1860s to the 1910s, it is a part of the now almost extinct history of manufacturing in Saugus. Second, it has served as an open space for public recreation by the people of the town for some 90 years. We did, however, vote to reiterate our belief that the site is a significant historic resource for the town and should be preserved, as specified in the vote of the 1930 town meeting, to accept the donation of the property to the town by the Stalker family." So that's that letter. And I'd just like to read something else. If I may?
Yes.
Okay. About the noise ordinance in Saugus limits the maximum sound pressure level at the closest residential lot line to 69 between 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. and 61 decibels between 7:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. A dog bark can range from 60 to 110 decibels, with most dogs falling between 80 to 90. The noise level of a group of dogs will be even higher. This will be considered disturbing the peace. Barking will be disruptive to neighbors and can cause stress. There are many historic homes in the surrounding area of the proposed dog park at Stalker Playground, including a medical home of five patients with Alzheimer's disease, directly located behind the proposed dog park. Even through a closed window, a dog's bark can reach a noise level that is mentally disturbing. I hope you can take these facts into consideration for the preservation of the playground and for the community surrounding it." And I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Seeing none, it's time for our first public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Saugus Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing for special permit on request of owners Adam Dion, 27 Suffolk Street, Chelsea, Mass., and Ilya Gluskin, 1 Marblehead Street, North Reading, Mass. Name of proposed business, Plunge Boston Wellness and Recovery Studio for Cold Plunge Sauna, Red Light, Norminec Compression, and Bodywork Physical Therapy. The business location is 880 Broadway, Saugus, Mass. This public hearing will be held in the Saugus Town Hall Auditorium, second floor, Saugus, Mass., on November 19th, 2024. Hi, would you please come up to the podium? Hi, could you please, if you wouldn't mind, signing in as well? And tell us your names and addresses, and then after that, if you could tell us a little bit about your business.
I'm Ilya Gluskin, 1 Marblehead Street, North Reading, Massachusetts.
I'm Adam Dion, 27 Suffolk Street, Chelsea, Massachusetts.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And could you tell us a little bit about your business?
Sure, yes. So we, we're looking to open a wellness and recovery center. Our main focus is we'll have advanced cold plunge tubs. We'll have multiple sauna units. We'll have red light therapy. We'll have a Norminec Compression Lounge. And Ilya here is a doctor of physical therapy, so we'll also include some bodywork and physical therapy as well, too.
It's kind of a summary. It's more of a community vibe versus individual suites that there's some competitors out there that offer that type of service.
So is this a relatively new concept, bringing all these types of therapies under one roof?
Yeah, it's, it's newer. It's definitely more prevalent out in the West Coast, and it's kind of making its way east. There's definitely chains popping up that are offering similar service, but again, more, I think, a little less personal.
They're in Boston.
Yeah.
They're definitely in Boston.
Do you have experience? Are you a physical therapist? I mean, what, how did you come up with this idea, this plan?
Yeah, so I, I've been a physical therapist for over a decade. You know, in a traditional setting, private practice, working with primarily like post-operative or just post-injury. And in healthcare, I think the way that things are going, being more proactive about healthcare is really where we need to be. So that is where things kind of started. And then the cold tub and sauna, just different modalities that people can utilize. There's a lot more research. It's not something new. You know, it's in Europe, they've been doing it for hundreds, maybe even thousand, hundreds of years. But I'd say in the last decade, there's been a lot more research that is showing very positive effects from all these modalities that we're hoping to bring to Saugus.
And this is your first business doing this type of work?
In this combined business model, yes. I've been a manager of a clinic for the last six years, though.
Yep, and just to add to Ilya, too, I've actually been in kind of the business strategy. My last occupation was at Deloitte, so I have a little bit different experience. My last occupation was at Deloitte, so I have a little bit different experience. But I was also a Massachusetts Army Veteran, Army National Guard Veteran as well, too. So I've seen a lot of injuries happen to folks. And, you know, I've seen different ways that they can go about those injuries with synthetic pain management, stuff that's just really not good for you. So I've tried the plunge tubs, going in the sauna, the plunge, all of that. So I've been doing that for months, and my body feels fantastic. So I'm really behind this concept, and I think it's a great thing for the community from a health perspective.
No, I think it sounds great personally. But board members, does anybody have any questions? Selectman Riley?
Through you, please. So all the employees that work at your business, are they all needed to have a certified, you know, education? Or how do the employees work with the people? Like, what do you need?
Yeah, so everyone's going to be CPR, first aid certified as a baseline requirement. The goal's going to be to have people that have some wellness background. But other than that, there's no specific certification or licensed organization that oversees it, other than physical therapy, which is a standalone service.
And I just have a follow-up. Actually, it's to you, Madam Chair. Why does this have a special license attached to it, like a special permit?
An S2 permit? Because it's something different?
Because it's different?
It's special. It's not something that they've ever had there before.
Okay. I just was curious. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So it looks like from your application, you're going to have four employees, and both of you as co-owners are going to be two of the four employees?
Correct.
That was just a follow-up on your question. Selectman Serena?
Madam Chairman, hi, how are you? I look in, looking at the floor plan, you have two plunge tubs and two red light rooms. What's, can you explain, is the red light room like a tanning type thing? How's that operate?
Yep. So it'll be two different rooms, and we have panels that go on the walls. So essentially, you would go in the private room, and, you know, whichever part of your body you want to utilize the light on, you can stand in front of it, you can turn. And usually, you do about a 10-minute session. Now, it's on the opposite spectrum of a tanning light, so it's actually the healthy red lights. It has many benefits, you know, proven benefits that I think I listed in the package that I gave you as well.
That's interesting. Thank you.
Selectman Chicalini?
Not question. I think this is a huge addition to the town. I think this is the way things are shifting as far as health and recovery, and people that do, even for folks that work out or work in the trades and come home. I know even from my own experiences with my children, when they go to the gym now, it's more than just going to lift weights, it's using the sauna and other things, that other amenities that are available to them. So I think this is going to, this is great for us to kind of get ahead of the curve and have one here in town. Hopefully, that's great for your membership and for people coming in. But also, it's nice to show that we're kind of forward thinkers and not the last one to bring it into town, which is more normal for us, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've had 31 orthopedic surgeries, so I'm actually looking forward to see if maybe you can help me where nobody else has. So it sounds like a great concept.
Thank you.
I went online and I saw your website. I was really impressed because typically, you would have to go to multiple different places to be for that type of therapy, whether it be dry needling, you'd have to go to either a doctor or a physical therapist, depending on who does it and who's licensed to do it. And I thought the red light was very interesting. So I agree with my fellow board members that it does sound like a lot of people would benefit for the work that you're doing. So if we vote on this tonight, when do you think it'd be open?
So the goal is by the New Year.
By what?
By the New Year.
By New Year.
So by January 1st.
And you're going in where ACTK was, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either in favor or opposed to this application? Did you want to get up and say you're in favor? Or you're, go ahead. No, 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 you can't. I'm sorry. That's cheating.
My name's Peter Bochino, and I've used Ilya's place for therapy probably about nine years. Probably had half the surgeries Mr. Cugliano's had. If he gets to open this, I don't have to do this at my house. Fill up a big tub, go get ice, throw it in there, get the floor all wet, hear my wife y'all, you know. Plus, I'm getting older, and there's a lot of people around my age that still like to go to the gym. And I feel being in a place where someone will take care of you plunging into ice and using red light therapy, I'd feel a lot safer. And I think it's a great adding addition to Saugus. I've been here 34 years.
Well, thank you for your comments. If you wouldn't mind, could you put your name and address down? There's a signup sheet there. That's just for our minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor or opposed?
Madam Chairman.
Selectman Serena.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectman Serena's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Selectman Serena.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion. We grant the S2 permit for Plunge Boston Wellness and Recovery Studio for a cold plunge sauna, red light, and physical therapy and normatic compression. Business located at 880 Broadway. Hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. during the week, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on weekends. And the recommendations all came back good from all the police, fire, inspectional services, Board of Health.
The only thing they asked if it's okay with you, if I add, is just a life safety inspection and to comply with the Board of Health rules and regulations, which I'm sure you're going to do that anyway. Is that okay?
You're not going to, you're not going to sell any open snacks or anything like that, right?
And that's seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, I need a roll call vote, please, Meredith.
Yes.
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 Yes. The vote is five to zero. Congratulations and good luck to you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Saugus Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing for the purpose of determining the percentage of local tax levy fiscal year 2025 to be borne by each class of taxable property within the town of Saugus, Mass. This public hearing will be held in the Saugus Town Hall Auditorium, 2nd Floor, 298 Central Street, Saugus, Mass. on November 19, 2024, at 7:10 p.m. Good evening.
How are you doing? David Riccadelli, 21, Columbus Ave. I'm a member of the Board of Assessors. I also have Dan Kelly and Jennifer Dion here on the Board of Assessors. We have Ivana Wilt, the Head Assessor. And in front of you, you have a package that breaks down how we came to the new tax rate that you'll be voting on this year. And I just want to give you a little overview of it. If you could go to page four, it's out there. This shows the new growth for 25, and it breaks it down between residential, commercial, industrial, personal property. And basically, it's mainly residential this year. Every year is different, different projects on Route 1, could be a commercial building, but it varies from year to year. And we have a few ongoing projects on Route 1 that haven't finished yet. But it just gives you a breakdown of this year and the previous years.
Mr. Riccadelli, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Personal property seems relatively high in terms of a percentage of new growth, at 34.4%. Can you explain to us how personal property is calculated?
There's, most of that is the utilities, as far as it could be national grid or a gas pipeline or the telecom companies. So if they did some capital improvements, that goes into that number. And the Department of Revenue also sets some of those rates. We have an appraiser that specializes in that, that appraises them yearly basis, and that's how we come to that number.
So is that how you came up with the total of the $38,087,682?
Yeah, the compiled between residential, like, this was a light year for commercial. Not many office building, commercial buildings. And like I said, the residential, it varies year to year. You have some apartment buildings that aren't finished on Route 1, so they're not in that number yet.
Okay.
Next year, it'll be in that number. So that's how that comes.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Tom Inata.
So I welcome Mr. Riccadelli. I did want, I think he pointed out a good point. I think this gives me a chance to reinforce something that sometimes comes up as a question about new growth and how come the budget's only $500,000 or $600,000 in new growth. And I do explain this through our budget process. So if you look, our new growth is $580,000. So if we budgeted $1 million, thinking we're going to get $1 million, and we only get 580, we have to cut services and cut departments in the budget. So we budget to make sure that we're going to make that number. And we usually generally come up, you know, I think we're budgeting $500,000 or $600,000 each year. And, but I do always get that question, say, well, we had $1 million, $1.2 million. Well, how come it's not in the budget? And we spend it in operations. Once we spend that in operations, the next year, if we only get $580,000, we start off by having to cut $600,000 in our own budget. So I just, that's, I understand that the new growth is sort of a fluid number. When things come online and they get completed, that number is, it goes all over the place. And we've had obviously developments, so the number's been higher over the years, and I think that's a good thing. But if you try to budget for that, and that's, in a past administration, they did that, and the town ran into real financial issues. So I just wanted to use that opportunity to point that out, so you understand it's $580,000 in new growth this year. And I think we budgeted, I think, 500. So.
Yeah, exactly. The, one of the big projects on Route 1 that was supposed to be done got delayed. So that'll kick in next year. It missed this year. So you never know when it's going to come. You know, even if they tell you we're going to be done in '24 or '23, it gets delayed a lot of times for different reasons. And then if we could go to page eight, in here, basically, we have the potential shift of the tax rate and the different factors. And traditionally, you guys have shifted the tax rate, the maximum value, to put more of the, more of the tax rate on the commercial and less on the residential to give the taxpayers a break. And the businesses would pay more of the percentage there. So if you continue to do that, the tax rate, basically, it really only went up three cents this year from last year, 10.65 to 10.68. And the commercial, you know, goes up. But like I said, the taxpayers get a relief because you guys traditionally shift the maximum onto the businesses in town. And then if you go to page nine, the average single family is, that's the best barometer. The tax rate is, you know, it is what it is. But to look at the average tax bill, and we have some other towns here that you can compare to, in Saugus, surrounding communities, we're among the lowest in your average tax bill. And you can also see their rates. So basically, you know, like you say, you can look around, and we have a good value compared to us around the towns.
Madam Chairman, yeah, just to kind of expand on that, a lot of people always ask about, you know, the tax bill and, you know, how come the tax bill goes up, or why do we pay this much in taxes? One of the things that we have to commend is our commercial base. And I think we, sort of, that gets lost. Because we're, when the board votes to shift that burden, we're shifting the burden of the residential tax bill, a portion of that, onto the commercial property holders. And so the commercial property holders are paying additional monies to have, so that we do enjoy a lower average tax bill than most of the communities around us. And I think that's the important thing. We have to understand that these, you know, commercial properties are partners within the community. And that allows us to keep a lower average tax. Well, I think he mentioned it, when you talk about the tax rate, there's different things movement, right? So in Massachusetts, it's different than other states. We have a 2.5. So when the, when the tax rate goes up 2.5%, it doesn't mean your house necessarily value, your tax bill is going to go up 2.5% because it's all factored into, you know, a formula where some houses might increase in their valuation higher, and the tax bill goes higher and others go lower. But the levy itself can only go up 2.5% absent new growth and other things. But understand, so like, if the values drop, right, the tax rate goes up. So in other words, the towns and cities in Massachusetts are always going to have the ability to get 2.5% above last year's levy. And so when people try to compare tax rates, it's not apples and oranges. So I think, like we talked about, and he just mentioned, is that the real barometer to look at is what the average tax bill is and what you're getting for that. We're a full-service community without a tax, without a tax fee, trash fee at this point. We have a very low average tax bill overall. And we've had, you know, the only override we've had is for the schools, for the middle high school, so.
Thank you.
And then, if you look at page 10, it breaks down the tax increase. So basically, the average tax bill in Saugus will go up $265 a year. You know, the three cents that goes up is minimal. And the other difference is the increase in value. And as we all can see, recent home sales, that's where that comes from, the increased values of the homes. So basically, the real estate market has been doing well, and that's why everyone's house is worth more money. So in turn, but like I said, it's a $265 increase in the average tax bill in Saugus.
And Madam Chairman, if I could just add, I think, and just to highlight again, I know he talked about it, but I think for the people at home and for people here, and to understand, is if you look on that page nine, at the top of the page, the grid, that's the average single family, and that's the tax rate and the tax value, the value in the family, single family tax bill and an average thing from each of the communities. And if you look at Saugus, the average tax bill is 65, $6,581, $81. That's the lowest out of the communities that surround us, I think, that all of us talk about. We have friends and family that have moved to these communities. They move for different various reasons. But Danvis, Linfield, Melrose, Reading, Stonem, Wakefield, you know, Linfield is what, it looks like 40% higher than Saugus. You have Reading, same thing, $10,019 is the average tax bill. The ones that are closer to us, Stonem, Danvis, and Melrose, and those are significantly higher as well. So we do enjoy, out of those communities that we're comparing, the lowest average tax bill.
Thank you.
I think it's also important to mention that tonight, the Board of Selectmen aren't voting on a tax rate. Our board is voting on to choose the shift, the town's tax burden from residential class to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes, as long as the shift does not exceed the minimum residential factor. This means that the burden cannot be shifted more than 175%. And historically, that is what this board has done.
Correct. If you have any specific questions, Ivana's available in this packet also.
Well, I want to thank the board. I want to, I thank you all for all of your hard work. I know that a great deal of time and effort goes into these numbers, and making sure that the appropriate tax rate is for residential and commercial. Do board members have any questions that they would like to ask this evening?
Madam Chairman, this is pretty standard stuff.
It is.
For me. And I want to thank the Board of Assessors, and I want to, behind over there, thank you for your hard work comparing this.
Great job by Chairman Riccadelli this year.
Did he?
Chairman Riccadelli, I think, did a great presentation this year.
I said the board. He's on the board, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The chairman.
Dave, you did a great job.
Any other comments? This isn't a public hearing, so I'm going to ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak either in favor or opposed, or would like to speak on the tax rate that was presented. Seeing none?
Madam Chair.
Selectman Chicalini?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, Selectman Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Selectman Chicalini?
Yeah, Madam Chair, based on the presentation by the Chairman of the Board of Assessors and the work done by them, I'd like to move that the board vote to shift to the maximum 175% and adopt the minimum residential factor of .851083.
And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion?
Just speaking on the motion, historically, the towns always shifted to the, shifted the tax rate from residential to commercial, the highest, I think, ever since it took effect in 1982, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have a motion seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor of Selectmen Vice Chair Chicalini's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Again, thank you all for all of your hard work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
And this pamphlet will be on the website, the assessors' website, so if anyone from the public wants to view it, it'll be on the, online.
That's, that, that's great. Thank you very much. Next is the Tom Manager's report. Mr. Tom Manager?
Sure, thank you. I just have a couple of things. The, the board's aware, I had said something earlier this week, just reiterating the close of the construction with road and sidewalks, that this year, in, in 2024, the town of Saguas repaired, replaced, and installed 1,645 linear feet of asphalt sidewalks and 615 linear feet of concrete sidewalks. And we, you know, as, as a, as a group here, we prioritize trying to do as much road work, we've, and sidewalk work each year, and this year, we've done record, record amounts in, in roadway. We did almost $3.2 million, and, and sidewalks, we've done more than we've done in the past. We continue to do repairs and continue to do those things and prioritize them for public safety and to, to improve the town and keep up with it. So, just want to thank everybody, the board, Finance Committee, and Town Meeting for supporting those initiatives and continuing to do that, as, in the past years, we've allocated additional monies for sidewalks and road work that we haven't done in the past, you know, we've done that the last few years, and hopefully, we'll continue to do that each budget season so that we have additional monies beyond Chapter 90. So, thank you. Also, wanted to, we have a press release that'll be going out probably tomorrow regarding the town of Saguas and the tree lighting. Tree lighting's coming up on Friday, December 6th, 2024, from 5:00 to 8:30 p.m. outside of Town Hall. We're just really looking forward to it. Every year, it's a huge event. Lot of people put a lot of time and work into it, volunteers, town employees, trying to put this together for the, for the residents, and we're hoping for some great weather, and have a great evening, so we'll have more information coming out on the website. But as everybody knows, there's tons of things that go on that, that night, and it's a great holiday tree lighting event for the, for the community, so we hope everybody comes out. Also, to try to anticipate we receiving any calls, the, is transmission line work in Saguas that's gonna be coming soon. The National Grid has alerted the town of Saguas that helicopters will be used for transmission line work near the Wakefield Line, so up near Golden Hills, so that hopefully residents, and hopefully, we can get it in the newspaper and on cable, so, and our website so that people are aware of it, they don't become alarmed. But National Grid has launched a project to replace existing wood structures and some steel structures with new steel transmission line structures. This project includes the installation of fiber optic cable on new structures to improve electricity, electric reliability and enable communication between substations. To date, the crews have completed foundation drilling and road work that is necessary for the project. National Grid's current schedule for the transmission line project is listed below. The schedule is, is, obviously, can change due to inclement weather or outage constraints. So, the structural installations and line work is to begin on November 4th currently and going through till December 21st. Helicopter use, they're, they're estimating November 25th through December 11th, and then whatever maybe outages restoration would be on and off through December 7th through January 10th, 2025. So, the abudders have been notified by National Grid about the transmission line project and the impact of it, and also, they had received orders of conditions from the Saguas Conservation Commission, so they've been in front of them, in addition, directing outreach representatives to go door to door to notify abudders. That's what National Grid's been doing. So, hopefully, in, in the hours of, of this, it's gonna take place, it's between 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. So, I think people probably aware of it, I think the helicopters will probably bring some attention, and they'll, we'll receive calls. Hopefully, we can get enough information, and what National Grid is doing for the outreach, hopefully, will, you know, settle some people so that they don't, you know, get anxious over, over the helicopters. So, just wanted to make the board aware of that and, and the public. Also, Saguas Trash Recycling Collection are gonna be running a one-day delay for Thanksgiving holiday next week. Is it next week? Yeah, next week, right? So, we're coming up quick, so we'll be one-day delay if, on that Thursday, please don't put your trash out, there'll be nobody collecting it. We don't want it all over the place. You gotta buy a bin, right? Maybe we can put a bylaw in to require everybody to have a bin, and then they have to have a cover on it, and we won't have to worry about everything blowing all over the place. So, but Thursday, Thanksgiving, we will not be collecting trash, so if you could put out your trash on Friday, and then Friday, put theirs out on Saturday. And I think that's, that's what I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Tom Manager. Do, do board members have any questions for the Tom Manager?
One other thing, we did put out something recently, a video on the Veteran Services and what they offer for people to try to keep them informed and just keep people up to date. Hopefully, you know, everybody that is in, is eligible for those services are receiving them, and if not, or if you know somebody in your family or friends or neighbors that are eligible for these or maybe eligible, please have them contact the Veteran Service Officer so that they can make sure they're getting all the benefits that they're entitled to. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tom Manager. The next item on the agenda was appointments. We have Gail Murray, and she's requesting for reappointment to the Board of Trustees of the Saguas Public Library. That term would expire March 31st, 2027.
Madam Chairman.
Selectmen Sereno.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Gail Murray to the Library Board of Trustees. Gail's been on there many years and very dedicated to the library, so I'd be happy to support that.
She does do a great job. And that is seconded by the Chair. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Selectmen Sereno's motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next is our second citizen's comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak before the board? Seeing none, we're going to go to members' comments. Selectmen Riley, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to wish luck to the Saguas Sachems next Thursday for their football game against Peabody. Hope you win, and I just want to wish everybody, my board members and everybody at home and the families, to have a happy Thanksgiving and just enjoy the time. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectmen Riley. Selectmen Cogliano?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to offer the same comments as Selectmen Riley did, wish our football team luck next Thursday against Peabody, and hopefully, people can get out to the pancake breakfast, and also, happy holidays, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you, Select, thank you, Selectmen Cogliano. Selectmen Sereno.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to, I know the board and Town Manager, we all attended Veterans Day, it was a beautiful day, and I want to thank the Veterans Council who organized the ceremony, and thank all the residents who came out to support our veterans, and again, I'd like to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. It's probably my favorite holiday, it's just spending time over a good meal and relaxing with family and friends, so hope everybody has a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectmen Sereno. Selectmen Vice Chair Chicalini.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. The Second Annual Saguas Fire and Police Department Kids Winter Coat Drive taking place December 5th. It'll be at the Saguas Everett Elks, 413 Main Street, starting at 7:00. There'll be music and raffles. I know Matt's here tonight, and I know you've been spreading the word. I got a couple of text messages from other public safety people, so looking forward to it. It's a great way, bring a, please bring a new winter coat for our children ages K through 12. It's a great event, and kudos to the men and women that are putting that on. That's, that's great. Also, a big shout out to Saguas Youth Cheer, U-12 B Team. They came in second at regionals, and they're invited to compete in nationals in Florida in December. Regardless of the outcome, I think we'll also have them in once it's all over to recognize them for their amazing accomplishments, and happy Thanksgiving to, to all, to my fellow board members, Mr. Manager, Meredith, everybody in the audience. Hope you enjoy, enjoy the holiday with your families and take in every moment. We're very lucky, we've had a great stretch of weather. Looks like we might have a little rain coming, which isn't a bad thing right now, but I'm looking forward to spending some time with, with the family around the holidays. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Selectmen Vice Chair Chicalini. I wanted to mention that on December 14th at noon, the Parsons Robey Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution is sponsoring its fourth Wreaths Across America event, helping both Riverside and Olberio Ground Cemeteries to remember and honor veterans by laying remembrance wreaths on the graves of our country's fallen heroes. And that's always a beautiful event. I want to say happy Thanksgiving to my fellow board members and your families, and to our Tom Manager, Clerk, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, and those watching at home, and go Sachems. With that said, with some, but please offer a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And that is seconded by the Chair. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Good night, everybody.
Our meeting is adjourned. I hope everybody has a great evening. Good night.
Good night.